of the planning board to order before the meeting begins, I would ask everyone in attendance to please silence their cell phones and to note that this meeting is being recorded, recorded, I'm sorry. Tina, who is calling the rule?
I am.
Okay, Tina, please call the rule.
Bob Doherty, James Callahan.
Here.
Kevin Donovan.
Yeah.
Dave Edmonds.
Yeah.
Carolyn Turner.
Here.
Mike Ventreska. Chair Claudia Bogan.
Here. All right, there are no subdivision approval not required plans.
There are not.
So we will go directly to public hearings. First, under public hearings is a continued public hearing for zero Marcy Street definitive subdivision plan. Commonwealth Realty Foundation LLC and Cummings Properties LLC are the petitioners. Good evening. If you could state your name and address for the record, please, we'd appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Michael Levany with Cummings Properties.
Awesome. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, thank you for having me. Consistent with the letter we sent to the board recently, we would request that we could continue our public hearing till the next regularly scheduled public hearing in January. We have been, since the last time we were here, we have met with the neighbors and we're trying to come up with a way, a path to approval for this project that works for everybody, and it's just going to take a little more time. I think we're getting there, and so we'd like to continue to January if that's not an inconvenience to the board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there questions from board members to the applicants? Hearing none. This is a public hearing, and if there is anyone in the audience who would like to speak, if you could come up and state your name and address for the record, please. All right, I do not see anybody, but if anyone is just taking a minute, we still have a minute. All right, so on this situation, Tina, do you have a recommendation?
I do. I would recommend that the planning board vote to continue the public hearing to January 9th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. And I say that because the board has until March 2nd of 2024 to file a decision on this matter.
Okay, and I see that because this is a public hearing, you are recommending that the meeting be held in person here at City Hall, so that if whoever makes the motion to continue, if that is part of your motion or not, I'd appreciate knowing that. So that is the planning board director's recommendation. Is there any further discussion amongst any of the members?
Still moved and to be here.
Okay, motion by Dave to continue this matter to the 9th of January 2024 at 7:00 PM here in City Hall. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Carolyn. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. I would ask for a vote. I note that members Turner, Callahan, Bogan, and Edmonds can vote on this. So all in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four in favor and none opposed. Sir, we will see you next year.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Safe and happy new year, everybody. Thank you.
Indeed, same to you. Okay, next, under public hearings, we have a continued public hearing for 43 Pool Street definitive subdivision plan. The applicant is 43 Pool Street LLC. Counselor, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman. Members, for the record again, Attorney James Juliano on behalf of 43 Pool Street LLC. We're here tonight for a vote. I think we rectified a lot of the matters. We do have some conditional things. Jay Duran, DPW superintendent, finally got back to us, and we feel that he's for the most part satisfied with everything. We addressed his concerns. He sent an email back to myself and Ms. Cassidy this week to address a few of the minor things. So I think what we have now is a vote that's ready with some, what we feel, minor conditions that we can certainly fulfill on the field and going forward before the planning board signs the plan. So myself and Ms. Cassidy and the applicant have been going back and forth. We have some revisions that we are satisfied with. There is going to be some discussion, I think, based on what Ms. Cassidy is going to reveal, and we have some comments, but I think for the most part, we're pretty much on the same page with everything at this point, and just wanted to see if the board had any questions or concerns at this point with regards to that. So we're not submitting anything new at this point. Everything we've submitted up to this point is in for the record, so we will not be submitting anything else for tonight.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant before we go any further? So it seems, I mean, I can, Tina, I can do this a variety of different ways. It seems to me that no one here in the room has any sort of ability to comment until your information gets shared. So does it make sense for that information to get shared, and then I would get the public hearing part of this started again?
Yes, that would be great.
Okay, thank you.
So maybe in terms of sharing, a couple of things. I did provide the planning board with a draft, a letter of approval for them to consider, and before they even do that, we will need to take votes on the waivers that have been requested. There were early votes on an earlier plan, but they're here this evening for the board to take. And then the recommendation from staff is going to be to suggest the planning board consider approving the subdivision with a number of conditions that would in part address some lingering things that we need to, housekeeping that we need to solve, and some of the more traditional conditions that you see on subdivisions, such as establishing a formal construction completion date, the submission of acceptable documents for the easements and things like that. If anybody wants them on the board, we can certainly screen share them on the screen behind the chair, but they're pretty standard, and they've been consistent with what we've talked about. The one, the one condition I want to bring to your attention for a little bit of discussion is, in fact, the one that is in the draft, revised draft number 1A. And that has to do with the homeowners association documents, and specifically the obligations and responsibilities of the HOA. Public Works Superintendent Duran felt that the, feels that the HOA should be responsible for maintaining the catch basins in the roadway right-of-way. And he also believes, although we couldn't find an example, he thinks the board has an at least one other occasion, in fact, required a homeowners association to do that. But as it turns out, the right-of-way would be a public way, and the two, couple of subdivisions, he thought, had the condition of an HOA maintenance obligation, in fact, did not. The HOA was responsible for inspecting for a period of time in some cases, and for submitting the inspection to DPW, but not for actually hiring the truck and the inspector to come down and do the work and clean the catch basin. So I have drafted a condition that would have the HOA do what I saw in the other documents, which is inspect the, annually inspect the catch basins, and to file a copy of that report with the planning department and with DPW. But it does not go as far as the DPW director had recommended, which was to actually have them perform the work. So I felt it appropriate to bring that up. And the other thing I want to mention is, I did note that, as hard as I worked on this, I did miss one other condition I'd like to add, and that would be to make the approval subject to the construction adhering to the stormwater operation and maintenance plan dated August 7, 2023. That was part of the stormwater management report of the same date that has been submitted and is part of the record. Then I'd want to make the approval subject to adherence to that, with the narrow exception of the clarification about the catch basin maintenance per the condition 1A.
All right, would it make some sense to go through the conditions so that the folks in the audience who don't have this document in front of them can have some idea of what you're recommending?
Sure. The first one would be, the first condition would be homeowners association documents that would spell out the HOA's responsibility for not only doing the inspection I mentioned of the catch basins, but also for maintaining all of the elements of the drainage system that are on private property. There's infiltration chambers that are on the individual house lots, and the HOA will have to maintain those. The next condition would be to require the submission of acceptable easement documents. We have the drainage, water, sewer, and tree belt easements. And then we also have another easement. You recall that there was a sewer easement 20 foot wide existing that runs along the site's eastern boundary, and that was the one that also had a walkway in it that had been created over time. And the petitioner had indicated their willingness to clarify and re-deed or clarify that that easement could be used for both sewer and for public walkway purposes. And so that would also be a condition of planning board approval. The stormwater operation and maintenance plan, which I mentioned previously in a different context, shall also be revised to incorporate the following items, and then the revised plan submitted electronically and on paper. Revised the operation and maintenance plan to require the construction of a stone apron area at each location where trucks will be exiting the construction site. So for the purposes of minimizing tracking of dirt off-site, we'd also require that it be revised to include a truck tire wash-off area on-site and use that to minimize, again, the tracking of dirt onto city streets. And then third, a revision that would require that Winter Road and Pool Street, to the extent that construction vehicles use Pool Street for access, shall be swept on a daily basis and kept free of construction debris and dirt. There'd be a requirement for submission of revised MYLAR and paper copies that reflected a couple of revisions. One was that it would contain the diameter of the cul-de-sac's pavement and right-of-way width, and both of those dimensions have to meet the standards of the board. For the pavement width, it has to be at least 86 feet of wide, and the right-of-way has to be at least 110 feet in width. The plan also has to be revised to remove or delete all notations that mention advanced drainage system as the material for the drain lines, and replace those references with the use of reinforced concrete pipe. And then the last plan revision would be to incorporate a detail of the proposed streetlight, which design for the streetlight meets with the approval of the Department of Public Works. The condition that is in your draft labeled F is, should be stricken, and I apologize, that's my mistake for not deleting it. That was what we were going to do in lieu of what you're about to read in 2A. And the next condition, for those of you that don't have a copy, is that at the direction of the DPW superintendent, a test pit will have to be excavated prior to the issuance of the first building permit, and that test pit has to be within the layout of the existing portion of Winter Road in order to determine the exact location and condition of the water main. The DPW superintendent will assess the test results and the video of the inspection of the sewer line that's already in existence to determine if the main's location conforms to the applicable standards of the Department of Environmental Protection. If it doesn't meet those standards, or if the main is determined to be in poor physical condition, then the DPW superintendent shall collaborate with the design engineer to replace, repair, or relocate the water main as needed in order to ensure compliance with the applicable design standards and to protect public health. Also, before the issuance of a permit, first building permit, a cross, a recordation of a deed that transfers ownership of parcel A on sheet 3 of 8 of the approved definitive plan to the owner of the abutting parcel at number 15, Winter Road. That was a very small, tiny, non-buildable parcel that was kind of left as a, really as a result of the way the roadway had to be designed. So that will have to be deeded to the abutter so that it doesn't become, you know, an isolated sort of orphan lot, as they call it. Another condition would be that a crosswalk must be installed on Winter Road in front of number seven, Winter Road, and crossing over to number six. All sidewalk curbing and related construction needed to accommodate an accessible crosswalk shall also be required to be installed. And then lastly, the construction completion date for the subdivision shall be December 12, 2025. As a condition of granting any extensions of that date in the future, the planning board may require that additional bond monies be posted to ensure the amount of surety is, in fact, sufficient to guarantee project completion.
Okay, and you said there was another stormwater maintenance plan condition that would be added. Did you already cover that?
That I, if I did not, I would add that, to be clear, that it would, another condition would be that the development would be subject to adherence to the stormwater operation and maintenance plan dated August 7, 2023, and as it may be revised by the board's decision, as it was contained in an August 7, 2023 stormwater management report, with the exception that we need to clarify, there is a paragraph in the stormwater management report regarding catch basins, and we'll have to clarify that, in fact, they will be required to inspect and report, but not to, not to clean.
Okay, and so that would be a five, right?
That would be a five.
Add that, okay. So, and then there are some waivers that you would be recommending. Can you just go through those, please, for the folks that don't have this in front of us?
I will. There are a number of waivers that are being requested. The first is a request to vary the minimum width of the roadway right-of-way. Typically, the requirement is 50 feet in width, and they're asking for a waiver to 40 feet, because that's what exists. They're asking for a waiver of the minimum roadway pavement width. Typically, the board requires 26 feet in width, and they are asking for a waiver to allow them to do 24 feet. There, typically, there's a requirement that there be a four-foot sidewalk installed on both sides of the road. They are asking for a partial waiver to allow them to install a sidewalk on only one side of the road. They're asking for a waiver, there's typically a requirement to install a three-foot wide grass strip between the curb and the sidewalk, and then a five-foot grass strip behind the back of the sidewalk and the right-of-way line. They've asked to waive that so that they can install a three-and-a-half foot wide grass strip instead of three, and on one side, the side that won't have the sidewalk, and a seven-and-a-half foot wide grass strip between the curb and the right-of-way instead of five feet, again, because there is no sidewalk on that side. And then lastly, the waiver they were looking for was a request to use advanced drainage system as the material for the proposed drain lines rather than the reinforced concrete pipe the city typically requires.
And that one, that one you would recommend us deny it?
I would recommend that you consider granting the first four and denying the last one, yes.
Okay, all right. All right, so that is, that is the proposal from the planning board director. So does anyone have questions on the board for the planning board director before I open up the public hearing again? No? All right. So this continues to be a public hearing. If there is anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this matter, either for or against, please come up and state your name and address for the record, please. Okay, so it doesn't look like the public is, has more to say on this issue. So if the board was inclined to vote on this, then the first, first thing I would need is a motion to close the public hearing. I would note that members Turner, Callahan, Bogan, and Donovan can vote on this. Kevin did qualify himself, correct?
Yes.
And Mr. Edmonds cannot. So those are the, the four folks who can continue to participate. Mr. Callahan?
Yes, I'd like to discuss the sidewalk deletion on this proposal. There'd be language put on there, no permanent structures be placed in that area for the sidewalk for us to be, which includes landscape items.
Like, oh, like a wall?
You said no landscape?
No landscape items or hardscape.
Okay. So permanent structures?
Well, there won't be a paved sidewalk, but it would be city property, it would be property for people to pass upon.
Just thinking how to word that to, to effectuate what you're trying to get at, which is not to impede folks walking.
Madam Chairwoman, if I may ask too. So just for clarification, I guess, so you're asking you don't want a wall right up into the street in those, those stripped?
A wall or anything that's going to prevent continuation of people walking along the edge of the curb, curb line to go around that cul-de-sac.
Got it, okay.
Whether that be boulders, or walls, or fencing, any kind of hardscape or landscape item. I'm not opposed to having lawn sprinklers in there, because I'm sure it's going to be grass.
Got it, okay.
Can't restrict the public from using that land.
So you want a passable, that's, that's fine. Yep, that's not a problem.
So something to the effect of no permanent structures rendering any portion of that strip impassable to the public, or something of that nature?
No permanent structure shall be placed in the area where the sidewalk would have been without the waiver. Restriction includes no hardscape landscaping or anything that would render it impossible for the public to pass and repass.
Okay, great. And so that would be impartial, we would, we would put that in the waiver language? Or the condition language?
I think I might put it in the condition language, as a condition. You're good with that?
Okay, so that would be, that would be condition number six.
It would be.
Okay. Does that, does that work, Jim? Okay, great. All right, any further discussion? Okay, if there's none, the first motion I would entertain is a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Okay.
Okay, a motion to close the public hearing by Carolyn, second by Jim. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. I would ask for a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, four in favor. Member Edmonds abstaining. All right, substantive motion to approve, deny, with conditions, with waivers. Should we take, so, so just if we vote on waivers first, and then the approval or approval first, and then the waivers?
Or, or because I articulated everything about my recommendation, I wonder if you could take a motion to accept the planning director's recommendation?
Oh, well, that would work too. Okay, so members, it's up to you.
I have one question. My question is for the applicant. One condition that was on the relocation, a possible relocation of the water main tie-in. Do you understand clearly what the DPW superintendent was referring to?
I do, and I can have Fred Russell, the engineer, elaborate, but I think I speak for him as well. Yeah, we, when we finally got in touch with Jay Duran, we were able to come to an agreement with regards to that language. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, so then I would entertain a motion to accept the planning board director's recommendation with the addition of conditions five and six as, as per the discussion.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, a motion to approve the planning board director's recommendation with additions five and six as per discussion. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Kevin. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All the members in favor, please raise your hands. That is four in favor, none opposed. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Counselor, very good luck.
I want to thank you for your patience with this one, for everybody, including Ms. Cassidy. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
All right, next on the agenda, under subdivisions, 24 Flag Street, expiration of construction completion date, and update on completion of remaining work, 24 Flag Street LLC. George Gately is the petitioner.
And to the chair, through the director, I need to recuse myself.
All right, member Turner is recusing herself from this matter. Mr. Gately, welcome.
Hi, welcome. For the record, George W. Gately Jr., owner of 24 Flag Street. So I'm back in front here for another extension. I know, I know. But I will start with this. It does look pretty good up there. I can't imagine the people on Flag Street are too upset. You guys might be upset, but if you remember when we walked it, it was like a dumping ground. It had a pretty rough house. There was no place to turn around. There was no hydrant at the end. Now I have a cul-de-sac, a hydrant. I did all the drainage. It's already in.
You moved the utility pole.
I moved the utility pole. I moved the carport back. The bulk of the work is done. All the hard work is done. It was a real tough dumping site up there. You guys, you walked it. You guys were all there, but, but that's still no excuse for not finishing. But it isn't like it's, I went into a neighborhood and kind of upset anybody. I think I went into that neighborhood and I think everybody's, unless Tina knows that there's people complaining up there. I don't know why they would be. It is, they'd probably rather houses never be done there, but it's kind of matches existing. There is no curbing in the whole street. There's no curbing in mine now. But I'm just saying, it's not an excuse. I didn't finish, but it isn't like I went in and hurt the neighborhood. I did, I think I did make it better for a change instead of upsetting people. I don't remember anybody on Flag even not wanting the subdivision. Those people on other streets, but, so, I do need another extension. I didn't even, I didn't change one thing this year. I didn't do a thing. That's all I can say.
All right. Does anyone have questions for the applicant? Dave?
So what is it that's not done?
Curbing bounds, razor, one drain manhole, one sewer manhole, as built plan, street light. I'm just going off the top of my head. Four street trees, you know, two trees in each lot. So the trees, there is no sidewalk. Trees, curbing, bounds, top coat, razor sewer manhole, razor drain manhole, raise two catch basins, raise one water gate, and, you know, build the two houses, but there's, I think that's about it.
You can't build with two houses.
Street light?
I did say street, yeah, yeah, I did say street light. Yeah, the street light's not in up there.
And as-built and street acceptance, I think.
Yes, yeah.
So basically, what you've done is perfect.
Yeah, the binder is down, so it's neat up there. Like my, the lots aren't, there's no trash or crap piled on. My pot's pretty neat. There's just two vacant lots right now. But everything's right there, the sewer connections, the water. I'm ready to go. I've just been a little tied up in some other places.
Good. Any other questions? Jim?
All the gassings flusher below grade?
So the catch basins are up, so they grab the water. The water gate for the hydrant is up. The water main gate where I extended is up, but the drain manhole cover and the sewer manhole cover are below.
But for, my concern is about plowing.
Oh, plowing, no, oh, oh, up as in an inch and a half up, you mean?
Yeah.
No, 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 everything's so, yeah, when you go up there, all you see is the two catch basin grades.
And catch basins and...
All the drain system's in. It's a big drain system, too, and it's...
They have silt sacks in them?
Ah, they do not. I can do it.
Well, that's all, you know, the concern I have.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Tina?
Well, it's sort of a question, maybe more than a comment to the board. Last time you were here, the, really, the only, the real concern, and by the way, I'm not hearing anything from the neighbors. There's no upset, there's no, you're right, George, there's nothing that's annoying them, at least that they're calling us. But the one thing I am concerned about is so much time has passed. Last time you were here, about this time last year, we discovered that the bond that you had posted over time is a little bit less than, at that point in 2022, what the costs were. And you weren't able or didn't submit revised cost estimates this time. You gave us a copy of the 2022s.
Right, right.
So that's really my concern is, for the board, that we have to make sure that, I don't, don't expect you to default, but in the worst-case scenario, when you did, we're supposed to make sure that there's enough money in the bond to cover the cost of the work that remains. And last year, we were a little bit under, but now I don't know where we are, because we don't have an updated one. So I wondered two things. If either you would be willing, or if I could ask the board, and if you weren't willing, to compel you to give us an updated cost estimate of what, the work that remains.
Right.
And then if we find that it is some significant number in the board's eyes, would you be willing to post the difference and add to the bond you already have posted to make sure that we still have enough?
Of course I would. I just, I'm going by memory, but I thought last year, of course, I'm talking about two lots, imagine, but I thought last year, when we went over the numbers that you guys carry in the engineering department, the numbers actually came down, and what I had in there was more than what the new numbers came in at. I think there's a letter that says that in there. But we left it alone, but I have no trouble doing that again, to answer your question.
So I'm looking at Greg Rehms' email from December 8th, 2022.
Yeah.
And the numbers are, he thought we needed 40...
And the numbers are, he thought we needed 47, 47,390, and we're holding 44,4.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yep, that was a memo from December 8, 2022, from Greg.
Yeah, so it was a little under last year, but we were like, okay, we're good, but this year, they're saying something different. Tina, attached in there is the review that this office submitted at the last extension. The office recommends the applicant submit new construction estimates based on the 2023 Massachusetts Department of Transportation median unit prices, in order to determine whether the current bond figure is sufficient.
Okay.
So, that's what Greg is saying.
That's fine, yeah.
Yeah.
I can forward you that email, and it had an attachment of the 2022 cost estimate, and his 2022 memo. I can send you that.
No, that's fine, yeah, okay, that's good, so, I can get it from Greg, does it have the new one, 2023, I can get them from Greg there, yeah.
He, he only gives a citation in his memo.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get those.
Okay.
Yeah, I have no trouble with that.
All right.
So, you know, if we have the numbers, then we could make a decision.
Yeah.
If you want a decision soon, get us the numbers.
Right, okay, good.
It, I mean, we can put you on for what, the next meeting, if you want to come back?
Next meeting's January 9.
That's fine.
I know there's a holiday in between, or two.
I would like to talk to, I wonder if one or two of you guys could come out there, there was a tree that, when I got that approved, when you went straight into the cul-de-sac, there's one off to the left, that you guys wanted me to keep, and since then, a big branch, it's dead, the tree is dead, there's no doubt it's dead, and so, if somebody would come out and look at it, and I know it's dead, but if it would be okay if I cut that down, I mean, I'd plant another one, or plant another two somewhere, but the branch that come off was like a 10-inch branch, it fell in the lady's driveway, her son down below, right on his net that he plays in, like it fell right in her driveway, broke up, and we went and cleaned it up, but it was pretty scary to think of, the kid was shooting on the net, so the tree should go. I don't care what you tell me I have to replace it with, but that tree should not stay.
Is that somewhere in our approval?
It is, it's on a plan, I had to highlight two or three trees there, but that tree there should just go.
vaguely remember that.
How do we, how do we?
Well, if...
How do we?
Was it you?
Even if we, I mean, say we agree with George.
I think it was you, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Probably was.
It probably was.
But let's, let's say we agree, then the question is, if that's a condition or it's shown on the plan, how do we fix that?
We have to do a modification.
Because I don't want this, us to say, sure, and you come for the as-bills.
Right.
And you don't get your as-bills approved, because it's not, you know what I'm saying? Like, let's just deal with this.
Yeah, I'm looking for it to be corrected, I'd like to, like, I'll get that cut down soon, like, if I could get somebody to say, agree with me, it's just, you can see it's dead.
Would you, would the board want someone from the city to go out and take a look at it and confirm that it is, in fact, a candidate? Not that I don't trust you, George, and it's not that...
No, it's fine, it's fine.
I don't know more about trees than you, but...
I'm worried about the ladies' kids over there, I'm not, I don't care about...
Well, it's time of the year, they all look dead to me, so, I mean, you know, still leaves. Are we really competent to make that determination?
Well, that's why I suggested, I didn't know whether you might want me to call on someone like Lenny Burnham, who's the Assistant Public Works Director, who, you know, conducts public hearings on removal of shade trees for the city.
I think that's extremely wise.
Yes.
Right, but I think that's extremely wise.
Why don't I see if I can arrange that between now and January 9?
Right, and then the question becomes, you know, how to fix it, so that it doesn't come back to bite at the very end of the process, right?
Right. Yes.
Are there any other trees that are in distress?
So, there's not one in distress, because one of the ones you wanted saved got cut down by accident, so it was under a lot of stress for a couple minutes.
Yeah, I guess.
That stress has now ended, so I'd probably have to ask forgiveness on that one, too, but the one on the way back there, that you wanted kept, we kept, but this, so we had one I cut down, I shouldn't have, one that's dead that should go, and one that's alive that, so I think there was three trees I had to keep there.
How many are you going to replace, you're going to add?
I don't know, you tell me, I don't know.
Well, if, was, if the tree that you cut down, that you shouldn't have, is somehow on the plan, and we're fixing one, we should fix it all, right?
Yes, exactly.
That's why I may ask.
We'll do the location while we're out there and take a look.
Yeah, so if we're going to fix it, let's fix it.
I can meet Lenny out there in a time, well, he can go up and look at the tree himself, but I'd like to show him one day, I know, he knows it's dead, you know what I mean?
I'll email him, I'll email tomorrow, and I'll include you on the email.
Yeah, and then...
It's over the holiday season, I don't want to put this on for a meeting that's not going to happen. Let's just think about this, is, is January 9 still a possibility, given that these other issues have come up, in terms of, we've got the money issue, and then we've got a tree slash dealing with our...
No, there's no issue, I could, I could fix, I'd get the plan drawn tomorrow, if I, without those trees and get that approved, I mean, it's just Lenny saying it needs to be cut, and I'll cut it right away, because it's just dangerous, but...
So, you want to leave it on for the 9th?
Sure.
Let's leave it on for the 9th, and if it doesn't, if it doesn't work, we'll figure it out then. So, do we need a formal motion to put this on our agenda for January 9, in order to deal with the outstanding issues?
I suppose it wouldn't table it till the 9th.
Would anyone, Dave makes that motion, is there a second? Second by Kevin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a vote, please, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Four in favor. Member Turner abstaining. All right, happy holidays, George, we will see you in the new year.
You will, January 9. Okay, thank you, all right. All right.
Good luck. Okay, next on the agenda, discussion, potential zoning amendment to permit murals in all zoning districts. Planning staff and Casey in person, welcome, Casey.
Good evening. So, tonight, I'm back in front of you to ask for your formal recommendation to bring this zoning amendment to the city council. You know, pending your recommendation, we plan to bring this to city council for a zoning change in January 2024. So, at the last meeting, there were concerns about moving parts in murals, so we did add a sentence to the end of the definition that states, "A mural shall be steady and stationary with no visible or move, visible, moving, or movable parts, or flashing animated or intermittent illumination," to address that concern. We also addressed a concern that the building commissioner had about the types of murals that are attached to a wall, not painted directly on, so we added in line 28, that murals that are affixed to the wall or attached by a panel will require a building permit for the connection detail, so that he can ensure that the actual attachment is safe enough to code and won't be falling off. We also added language that authorizes the building commissioner to order the repair or removal of any murals that are found in disrepair, so that's also added in line 28. We also, sorry, note 28, that is, at the bottom of your sheet. We also touched base with the city solicitor, you know, see what is the absolute limit that we can push content moderation to, and she had a very firm stance that we can only moderate time, place, and manner, so she wasn't comfortable adding any more language into the zoning amendment regarding mural content moderation. So, we have these four points here, I believe you will have them in your packet, and so this is kind of the package that we're recommending to send to the city council, and I think we've taken your feedback from the last two meetings, but happy to take any more comments as well, if you have some.
All right, does anyone have any questions or comments for Casey? Good?
So, just a comment. My comment about the ugly fact, it was only because of discussion.
Mr. What?
Was to bring discussion forward, which made a lot of the changes that I was very interested in seeing, because I did a lot of research and found out it's not as simple as it appears at first blush, and I just wanted to make sure that we didn't, as I said before, we've had a long history of people passing language to death, where suddenly something you didn't think was possible, was possible, and I like the fact that you've pretty much outlined, this is what you can do. We're not telling you what it can look like, we're just telling you this is structurally what it is, and, and I'm very appreciative of that. Just remind me again which districts we're talking about?
So, we have it proposed in all of the commercial zoning districts, so it wouldn't be allowed in residential or open space.
I just wanted that to be said aloud again. Okay, thank you, I'm good.
Are you good? Okay, thank you, Dave. Anybody else have questions or comments for Casey? All right, hearing none, I guess I would ask the planning board director for her recommendation.
Well, I would recommend, if the board is willing, I would recommend that the board vote to formally sponsor this zoning amendment, so that we can submit it to the city council and start the public hearing process.
All right. Okay, motion by Dave, is there a second? Second by Jim, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I would call for a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands. That is, one, two, one, two, three, four in favor, four in favor, and? Okay. And? Any opposed? Carolyn? Okay, so that is four to one, and it sounds like we are going to the city council?
Great, thank you.
All righty, thank you so much, Casey.
Thanks, Casey.
All right, planning board director, update.
Yes, I'm not, where are my notes? Sorry. Not a lot to, to update you on this evening. Our next meeting, as we said earlier, is going to be on January 9, and then I am recommending, and it will be an in-person meeting, we'll have the continuation at least of Marcy Street on that agenda, and will also include discussion of expired construction completion dates for the Carlson Way Sherman Terrace and Farlow Drive subdivisions. So, it'll be a full meeting that evening.
All right, thank you. Okay, any questions for the planning board director on the update? All right, next, approval of minutes. We have two minutes, November 12, 2023, and the November 25, 2023 site visit.
Did you say the 12th, it says the 14th?
Oh.
First typo. I believe, right?
Well, I'm reading off the agenda.
One of them's wrong.
One of them's wrong, so let us get our calendars out and figure out which is the situation. So, I have draft minutes 11:14.
Yep, that's the date it should be.
Okay, so, not the 12th, the 14th. Dave is paying attention, thank you.
I have my days.
All right, shall we take the minutes from the November 14, 2023 meeting first? Are there any questions, comments, concerns about the minutes as submitted? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
All right, Dave makes a motion to approve the minutes as submitted, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Carolyn, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I would ask for a vote, can everyone here do that? Voting on this? No, not Kevin, so, all those in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, and Kevin abstaining on that vote. All right, then the second minutes, let me, instead of reading from my agenda, I will actually open them. November 25, 2023, this is the draft minutes from our site visit at Zero Marcy Street. Does anyone have any questions, comments, or concerns?
It was a cold morning.
Doesn't say that in the minutes.
No.
If there are no questions, comments, or concerns, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
All right, motion to approve the minutes as submitted by Dave, is there a second? Second by Jim, any further discussion? Hearing none, I would call for a vote, all those in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four in favor, and Kevin, you weren't at the site visit?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were voting, I remembered.
Yeah, so, one abstention and four approve. Okay, so those are the minutes that we have, and going back to my agenda. Are there other business matters that may legally come before the board, not known at the time of posting? Tina?
Not from staff.
Okay, then the only other item on our agenda is a motion to adjourn the very last meeting of 2023.
Ooh, and, very, very last meeting that you would be the full chair of. Ah ha, two reasons to celebrate, or mourn.
Kevin makes a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Carolyn, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a vote, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Five in favor, none opposed. Thank you very much, happy holidays.
Healthy New Year.
Healthy New Year.[1766.77]